Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone present in the chamber and those listening online to Lincolnshire's County Council's Pension Committee. My name is councillor Condell and I'm chair of this committee. Can I remind those in attendance that the audiovisual feed of this meeting is being broadcast live via the council website? I will try to ensure that all members have opportunity to ask questions and make contributions today. Before we move into the formal agenda, I just want to say a few words. As I've said, welcome. This is the first pensions meeting since the elections in May, and as such, there are a lot of new members on the committee. I thought I would remind everybody that it's a non-political committee and that our fiduciary responsibility is to the members of the pension scheme and to ensure that we meet payments when they fall due, not to any political party. That being said, we'll now move on to the formal agenda. Item one.
Thank you, chairman. I have received apologies from Steve Larter.
Move on to item two, declaration of members' interests. Is it, councillor? P.K.?
Yeah, Key, yeah.
Thank you, chair. I'm an active drawing from the pension, drawing from the pension, yeah.
Councillor?
Thank you.
Bartlett?
I'm Jo, so I'm an active contributor to the Pension Fund.
Thanks, Chair. I'm a member of the Pension Fund as well.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you, chairman. I'm a receipt of a pension from Phoenix Company, or whatever it's called, which I will get registered this afternoon. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Moving on to the minutes of previous meeting, item three. Can I ask for a proposer and seconder from the co-opted members and councillor Bunny? Councillor Bunny?
I would like to propose the minutes as a true and accurate record of the meeting we held before the election.
Thank you. And councillor Key. All in favour? Any against? Any abstaining? Thank you. We'll now move on to item four, the report of the independent chair of the Lincoln Local Pension Board. George Graham, independent chair, will present the report.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, thank you, Chair. This is the regular report on the activity of the board over the previous quarter, so essentially, the, or an account of what happened at the last meeting, which was after the March meeting of the committee. The board's role is essentially to give the committee assurance in terms of the broad governance of the fund, and there's three issues I think I'd like to draw the committee's attention to in the report. The first is around the use of temporary bank accounts, where the funds administrators at West Yorkshire Pension Fund have now agreed that those will no longer be used. This is something the board's been taking an interest in for some considerable time, particularly under my predecessor, Roger Buttery, and we welcome that for a whole range of reasons, which we needn't go into here, but that represents significant progress. The other thing that the board, the board looked at, the review of a range of fund policies at its last meeting, however, the board was doing that after the committee had already approved those policies. So, in order to make the work of the board more useful to the committee, we've suggested and the officers have agreed that in future, the board will look at those policies a cycle before the committee receives them, so that effectively, the board can exercise some pre-legislative scrutiny over the policy reviews. I should emphasise, there wasn't anything that anybody could take exception to in the policies that were produced. That's not the reason why we made that suggestion. And the third thing was about the annual review of the board's membership and terms of reference. The board suggested, and the administering authority agreed, that it would be helpful to increase the membership of the board from two on each side to three on each side. This is largely to help ensure that we maintain a quorum. It's, with two members on each side, it's always a bit of a high-wire act at the beginning of the meeting to ensure we've got a quorum. So, that's been implemented and we actually have made the appointments to all those new members. I'm happy to take any questions, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Bunny?
Thank you, Chair. It's not a question, really, but I think I would certainly welcome the fact that you're going to be looking at the policies before we do and that officers have agreed to that. It seems to me that that's an obvious thing, which will make sure that the scrutiny and everything is done to its maximum thing. So I think that's a really good, positive suggestion that you brought forward there.
Any further questions? Okay. Councillor Rockaway?
Thank you very much, chairman. Just a quick question. I noticed in paragraph 1.3, you talked about incremental progress continuing to address backlogs. What caused the backlogs, please, and how big are they? You may not have that information to hand, but...
Thank you. I think councillor, you've got the opportunity to probe the exact numbers and detail later on your agenda with Matt, but I wouldn't want the committee to get the impression that backlogs in administration are a Lincolnshire problem. They're not. They're a universal problem across the scheme. There are lots of underlying reasons why they occur, but basically, they all come down in one way or another to the increasing complexity of the scheme, both for employers and administrators. So it's very difficult for employers to give the fund the right information all the time, and it's also very difficult for administrators to use that information in that way. So, one thing Matt's report talks about is what West Yorkshire call linkings, which in my fund's terminology would be aggregations. In the fund I run, we had one case where 30 records had to be aggregated. So 30 different bits of service, both active and deferred, had to be aggregated into one member's pension. There are very complex rules about how you do that, so you can think about, you know, multiplying, you know, even a small portion of that by the number of members the scheme has. It's easy to understand why.
Councillor Hill, did you have a question?
Yes, I did. Thanks, chairman. I mean, I'm just trying, I mean, I had your role over 20 years ago. I gather you have knowledge of the pensions industry, which is very helpful.
Yes.
And have to say, things have got a lot more complicated and bureaucratic, I think is the fair word, for it. So I think some of the questions I could ask George probably could be asked later on in the agenda, but I suppose, I'm still trying to get my head around all these different committees and advisers, and bluntly, is it the case where you can't see the wood for the trees in terms of what we're supposed to do? I suppose the question I've asked for you on your opinion as chair in the committee is, obviously, there was, performance-related fees on paragraph 5.1 were low, and I think that was, if you look further in the report, was due to a poor performance in the last quarter, and I'm very sure that in terms of investment returns. I know, I remember from the old days, never look at just one quarter. So the question is, is there any concern you have that this will be rectified in the medium to long term, or is there anything that this committee should be thinking about?
Sorry, if I can just come back on that. I think that's on the next paper, the fund update one.
Yeah, I was just asking for the opinion of this committee.
The board don't particularly look at the investment performance. Their responsibility is the oversight of the administration and the governance, so a lot of the performance papers don't go to the board. Their role is different to the committee in that aspect, but I'm sure George can give an opinion on the fund performance.
Yeah. Just based on my knowledge of running another LGPS fund, these things do vary from quarter to quarter, and we should never look at a quarter, or indeed, any single year in isolation. You need to look at the long-term, the long-term performance of the fund is good. The decisions that have most effect on performance are not the decisions about individual investments. They're the decisions about how much you put in each of the buckets that you allocate to, so equities, bonds, and so on. And the evidence seems to indicate that, you know, Lincolnshire's strategic asset allocation, as it's called, is driving long-term performance, so I'm not, I wouldn't be, if I was sitting where Jo is sitting, or heaven forbid that I should ever do this, but sitting as a councillor on the committee, this isn't something that would cause me undue concern. If it was beginning to affect the five, the three and five-year numbers, I would be, I would be somewhat more concerned and I'd be seeking to take action. And, you know, you'll be coming up to an investment strategy review, so that's the opportunity to think about that, because the overall funding position is now different. And does that mean your asset allocation needs to change? Doesn't necessarily, but that's the process that Jo will be going through with the investment advisers to work through that in due course.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, councillor Hill, yes, I would like to keep my eye on this, but again, it is a long-term thing that we would be looking at. Are there any further questions? Then can I just take a show of hands to accept the report? Thank you. We'll move on to item five, the Pension Fund Update Report. Jo Kempton, head of the Lincolnshire Pension Fund, to present the report.
Okay, thank you, chairman. So this is the standard quarterly update paper. Recommendations with this report are that the committee consider and discuss the report and agree whether any additional actions or information is required. So I'm not going to go through it in detail, I'll just highlight the key points here. Paragraph 1.9 on page 17 updates the committee on the funding level, and the actuary's report is attached to appendix C, showing that the funding level is around 100% funded as at 31st of March on a roll-forward basis. The actuary will be presenting a session later in this agenda on the 2025 valuation. And just on the performance, I won't go into any detail here, but the September meeting, so the quarterly meetings that we have that cover investment and stewardship, give you that opportunity to really quiz our investment managers about any areas of performance, either overtly good performance or underperformance. Section two updates the committee on any breaches that have occurred over the quarter, and the breaches over the year are shown in appendix D. There weren't any material breaches, and there was nothing that we had to report to the pensions regulator. So the three breaches that you see appearing generally appear every quarter, but they are not material breaches. There's been one change to the risk register, which is shown in section three on page 18, in the risk of a reduction in the overall knowledge of the committee, where we've been able to change that direction of travel to improving. Every member, all the new members, have received the initial training that was undertaken either on the 12th of June or in a one-to-one session, so that's very positive to be able to move that direction of travel forward. Section four updates the committee on activity with border-to-coast and the partner funds. The last joint committee was actually held yesterday, and I shared papers with the committee. If at any time any members do have any questions they would like taken to the joint committee, please do email councillor Condell, and he can ensure that they get raised at the next joint committee meeting. Section five, on page 21, provides the outturn statement for the 2425 budget with an underspend of 0.8 million, and this was mainly due to lower investment management performance fees than we expected. Section six, on page 22, explains the discretion exercised by the fund to delay including the McLeod data in this year's annual benefits statements, and the reasons for that are set out in paragraph 6.5. And finally, at section eight, there's an opportunity for any members to discuss any training events they've undertaken since the last meeting, and a reminder that all training opportunities are sent out to you in the weekly email that we send out on Monday afternoons. So I'll be happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Councillor Bunny?
Thank you. Can we go back to the risk register? I understand, obviously, what improving means. Can you remind us why we decided that it was deteriorating in the first, because what we don't want to do is to slip from being an improving back into that deteriorating section? Thank you.
Yeah, it was only changed because we expected a lot of turnover following the elections, or there was a potential for a lot of committee turnover at the last election. So obviously, every election, we potentially get a lot of new committee members. Some of those may never have sat on the pensions committee before, so it was just to make aware of the risks that there could be a drop in knowledge, but given that everybody has completed that training, so it's very positive for the committee that we can move that to improving. And then the training paper will be brought later to discuss what further training is expected of committee members.
Thank you. I'd forgotten that bit.
Councillor Hill?
Thank you. On appendix D, there's the record of the breaches, which you've explained, and the outstanding actions. There does seem to be a lot of, I mean, obviously, it's quite important for both for the Pension Fund, but also for those in receipt of benefits or payments, particularly, I just want to ask some questions about this, how, as a new member, how we, how the Pension Fund actually makes sure that when somebody dies, that as quickly as possible, the Pension Fund is made aware, so it's no longer paying out, and are there any breaches? But the other one point I'd make is, it keeps saying, continuing training and communication with employers, which are obviously all, lots of employers, so is there any other actions could be taken in, say, for example, fining or penalising employers? Because otherwise, we are relying on people, I say goodwill, but we're expecting, but if there are actually, there was some mechanism whereby they could be penalised or rewarded, if you like, for prompt actions in this, is there anything we could be done in that case?
Can I answer the second part first? So we have a very robust contribution monitoring process. We have one officer in the Lincolnshire team, that their role is to ensure that of our 268 contributing employers, that they get their money paid across on time, and it is the correct rate, because they all have their own contribution rates. Now, the issue we have is, because we have so many employers, and a lot of them are academies, and they use external payroll providers, and there can be a constant churn of payroll provider or staff at payroll providers, so actually, our numbers, given the, given the number of employers we have, are generally very low, and even if they're a day late, we will log them. But they are all chased up and asked, why are they late? To get the reasons for that. If they're late in any three out of any six rolling months, we will fine them. So we do have the ability to fine them, and that fine can escalate depending on how much officer time is required. Again, it's not a Lincolnshire-specific issue with the, and I think we actually do an awful lot of contribution monitoring and report back to them. So one thing we don't do is just automatically fine, we will engage with them first, because we want to keep our employers onside, we want to work with them and within the team. If there are any either payroll providers or employers that are having difficulties, we refer them to the employer team at West Yorkshire, who work with us, and we'll go out and provide training and understand what the actual root of the problem is. We've also, over the last year, West Yorkshire have moved to a slightly different system of how the data is submitted to them, to West Yorkshire. So that has caused some delays in some places with learning how the new system works. Going forward, it should ensure that the data is much cleaner, because they can't submit the data until the errors are sorted, whereas previously, they could submit the data and then there would be a catch-up to ensure that everything was correct. So it's an improvement in how the data will come to us, but there's still that learning curve as people have transitioned across to that. On the second side, on actually paying pensions, how we ensure that happens. Can I defer that question, please, for Matt to answer in his administration update? Because that is their responsibility. We have KPIs where we monitor this and will question if there are any issues with payments not being made on time, so if you're happy, I'll defer that.
I don't really want questions one at a time, or bunches, chairman. One at a time, which, in your hands. Yeah, I mean, the other one was about, and I don't know, it's just, it's very confusing, this is, do I ask you about the, obviously, the, it's now 100%, the actual funding level has dropped. Just quite, I mean, in the report, it does state, is that a question for you, or is that a question for Matthew?
It will always move about, because it is based on a point in time or a point over a period of time. But obviously, as markets move up and down, as gilt yields move up and down, it's, it's nothing to hang your hat on, really, the funding level. It's more of a long-term aim. So quarter to quarter, it will always move, be it up or down slightly. The worry would be, if we went from being around 100% to suddenly 70%, then there would be something significant that would have happened to cause that drop. The other issue at the moment is, because we're just starting the 2025 valuation, the data that's being used for that roll-forward is still the 2022 valuation data. That only gets updated on the system every three years, so the membership data, all the individual data that sits underneath those employers, is rolled forward on a quarterly basis that we can run the report. We can actually look at any time to see a snapshot of the funding position, but it's not actually that useful. It just gives us an indication, is there anything really serious that we have to worry about? So it would just be market movements. Obviously, up to the end of March, markets were quite volatile, gilt yields moved, so it will just be the technical factors behind that that caused that slight. I think we went from 101 to 100%. I think it was a very small drop. So it wouldn't be anything that should cause any concern, it would only be if there was a major drop, and then we would be going back to the actuary to try and get an explanation of what's caused it this quarter, because moving, you know, even 5%, 10% in a quarter wouldn't cause any undue concern. But what Melanie and Kelly can explain a bit more, perhaps, how that funding level is calculated as part of the valuation session later?
Yeah, and I think it's important, because obviously, there will be valuation, which will then affect contribution rates, and it does fluctuate, but I just wondered, was there any underlying changes in methodology that has meant the, there has been a small drop, admittedly, but we're only just on the borderline now of being able to, in theory, pay all our liabilities. So I don't have more explanation, I'm just interested in the long-term trend, because it, you know, whilst in my previous role, I took a notice of, you know, and it does vary tremendously. It's gone up and down 75, 85% below to a positive. So just really interested from the committee's, this committee's point of view, is there any changes, or is it just market forces and investment?
No, we would always report if there, so we had some changes last year in some of the way the funding level was calculated, so if there were any reasoning, if there are any changes made, we would always report those back to the committee in this report. So this is just purely market fluctuations.
Councillor Roberts?
Thank you, chairman. Hi, Jo. Quick question for you. At what level does it have to drop before the contributions would need to increase? What's the panic percentage? Not that we're anywhere near there, but it's nice to know.
So contributions won't increase in a valuation period. Contributions are reviewed on a three-yearly basis as part of the valuation, the triennial valuation process, and that's when the actuary will look at what's happened, looking backwards, where the assumptions and expectations are going forward, to set contributions for the employers for the following three years. The only time we would change contributions within that time would be perhaps an employer might ask for an interim contribution review, but there would have to be some, it couldn't just be because everything looked really rosy and they thought, actually, if we get a valuation now, we're going to have to pay less. It would have to be, there'd been some material changes, so for example, they'd been through a merger or a reorganisation, had lost a high percentage of staff, so something really material to their membership, then we would talk to the actuary about, should there be an interim valuation at this point? But as standard, employers get their rates every three years for the following three years, and we would not change that in between.
So just to confirm then, so the 100% valuation at the moment is worked out from a valuation from three years ago, is that correct? Or have I got that wrong?
Yeah, and rolled forward with what's happened in markets.
In the markets.
But it hasn't, what hasn't been updated is the membership data for all the underlying employers. That's happening now. The data, I think, in the next couple of weeks will be going across from West Yorkshire to the actuary, so they can start doing the work for the outcome of the 2025 valuation. Those rates will be going out, this will be brought back to the October meeting, and then in November, those rates will be going out to the employers to say, these are your expected rates for the next three years. We then do some engagement with the employers, we get them to agree to them all, and then in March next year, the final valuation report comes to committee with what's called the funding strategy statement, which sets out how those rates have been calculated, how we deal with employers at various events, so...
So when that, when you evaluate how many people are claiming, et cetera, et cetera, how many members there are, that's when we get a new valuation, and that 100% could change either way? Because as you say, you've got two things, you've got what the fund's doing, and you've got the people who are claiming, putting in, but, so the fund one is continuous, pretty much, you know how much money you've made and how much you've not. But it's every, every three years, we actually know the true figure of how it's doing and what the percentage funding we've actually got to actually be able to pay everybody out what they need.
Yeah, and that's set out in the regulations, that we do triennial valuations. It takes, well, we started work on this in September last year with our initial meetings with the actuary. It will finish March next year, so it's incredibly long piece of work. So every three years, because as I say, the funding level is a bit of a snapshot, it's very forward-looking, lots of assumptions that will only ever be wrong, no disrespect to our actuaries. So that's why it's done every three years, to make sure that we're still on track, but on a day-to-day basis, it will move about all over. But yeah, every three years is within the regulations, that's when every LGPS fund has to have a valuation to set those employer contribution rates.
If past the miracle, we was at 120% funded, would you even consider reducing what people pay, or would you just basically leave it to keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger?
Yeah, so every employer will have their own funding level. So the fund overall is about 100% funding, but within that, we'll have some employers that might be 140% funded, and some that might be 50% funded. Most are on the higher end. When that's done, we do discuss that with the actuary, and it will be in the funding strategy statement. We will have a, we have a kind of a volatility reserve, so if they've just got to 102% funded, we wouldn't want to reduce their rates, because as I say, that can kind of all come out in the wash. If they were getting to about 120% or above, then we would look perhaps to give a negative secondary contribution. So I don't know if you recall from the training, the contribution rate is made up of two elements, a primary, which is paying for the ongoing service being built up, and a secondary rate, which covers any hole in the funding level. So, and we did it at the last valuation, and I'm sure we'll be doing it again at this valuation, those employers that are well-funded, once we've taken account some volatility reserve in there, will have a negative secondary rate, so it reduces the overall... So it reduces the overall contribution they pay. So that will be all part of the discussions that we have. Once we get the initial results, looking at how the employers sit, how prudent do we feel we need to be? Our main aim with the employers to is ensure that we can be as affordable as possible, but creating that stability as well. Because there's nothing harder for employers than if you drop their rates and then they have to increase them at the next valuation because we've had disastrous markets. So we do a lot of engagement with employers. They have the option to come and talk with us and talk with the actuary once they've got their rates to make sure that they are content, I won't ever say happy, but that they are content with what their rate will be.
Thank you.
Counselor Brockway?
Sorry. Come on. Thank you very much, Chairman. Actually, most of my questions have been answered, to be honest. But just to tweak a little bit, this business about the funding level being reduced by 1%, that's actually an awful lot of money within the context of three and a half billion, isn't it? So I think I liked the fact that you're giving us detailed assurances about that. The other thing is, I could have sworn on the training day, and I may be wrong, I thought you did mention, you first of all did tell us about the percentage of funding, but I did think that you had mentioned a sum of 120% funding. Did I hear that wrongly?
I think that was about the, where would we reduce contributions? And I said that 120% was kind of what we used for the last valuation period. So we'll be having that discussion as to what is inappropriate. So there is one fund that is very, very overfunded, and there have been a lot of questions and concerns raised about, you know, what is actually that point when your surplus is enough and you should then be passing some of that back to employers through a reduced ongoing contribution rate?
Thank you, Chairman. If you pass it back to employers, does anything get back, passed back to the employees themselves, the pension fund members?
No, because the pension, the scheme member's contribution rate isn't set by the fund, that's set centrally by government, and the scheme member doesn't bear any of the risk. So it's the employer's rates that will go up or down and vary depending on how well the fund has performed, how well markets have done, how the liabilities have changed. So because it's the employer that takes all that risk, it is their contribution rate that is the one that moves if we're either under or if they are under or overfunded.
Counselor Hill, did you have another question?
Yeah, just a couple. Joint committee meetings, I have a question for you, Chair. I presume joint committee is all the pension funds which make up the Board of the Coast? Is that, what is, that is what the joint committee is, is it? Just so I understand. So the joint committee of what? Is it all the pension funds who make up Board of the Coast?
It's the Chair of all the pension funds.
Thank you. So two questions. One, if, say, this, our 3.5 billion pot and we're not happy with the performance of Border to Coast for whatever reason, what is the, what is the remedy or what can be done about it? And secondly, I'm very interested in responsible investment update. So I'm really interested, what is the definition of responsible investment and how does that equate to our fiduciary duty to make sure that the pension fund is A, fully funded, B, is invested safely but maximises return? So two questions there, please.
I could answer some of them, but I'll pass to you, Joe.
So we are now in a position, and will be in a position going forwards with the new statutes coming in and regulations. We cannot opt out of Border to Coast, we cannot appoint our own investment managers as we have historically prior to pooling. So there's a, there's a strong oversight process where we work in partnership with Border to Coast to assess the performance of all the underlying vehicles that we're in. That gets reported to all the joint committee meetings. There are annual reviews of all the underlying vehicles. As officers, we spend a lot of time working with the Border to Coast team, understanding the performance, challenging the performance, working with our investment consultant and independent advisers to challenge that performance. So for example, there have been issues with one of the sub funds, Global Equity Alpha, and you'll hear from the manager in September. So if you're happy, I'll just give you a very high level overview of this now, and then that would be a really good question to ask.
What can be done? It sounds like, because there are currently 10, 10 members.
Eleven.
Which will grow because, so I'm not sure, so we've just got a lump it, is that what we're saying?
No, we collectively challenge the performance and we can direct them. Worst case scenario, as shareholders in Border to Coast, we can sack the board. So we have a number of different levers as shareholders, but as clients and investors, it's the oversight of the manager and to question, challenge. And having done that with Global Equity Alpha, they have made changes to some of the managers, they've changed and the kind of the value growth profile of it. So there's a lot of, the monitoring that we would previously done with managers, we now do with Border to Coast. But because we own them as well as a 1/11 shareholder, we do actually have more levers now. Because we can't sack Border to Coast, we work with them to ensure it's, they are not working for any profit. This is all about their, their aim is to ensure that they get the best net fee performance for all the partner funds within there. So it's really through that oversight process and working together that we ensure that if we're not happy with a vehicle, we're also involved in the creation of the vehicle as well, in the development of it, what do we need, how should that be built? So it is through that oversight and ongoing monitoring that we can make changes or get changes made. The second question about responsible investment, I think this, the definition, there will be numerous different definitions, but the definition that I prefer is just about ensuring that we are good stewards of our beneficiaries' money and that we invest in long term sustainable companies. So it's absolutely about material financial risks. It's absolutely not about anything other than that. The end of the day, our committee's role, the fund's role, as Counselor Condell said, is to make sure we can pay pensions. So it's, as you would through the audit committee, ensure that all the service areas of the council are doing what they should be doing and doing it well. Responsible investment means looking at the companies that are invested in. Do they have good policies in place to ensure they're looking after their staff, to look, to make sure that they're, on the environmental side, it's not just about climate change, that is one small aspect of there. Are they ensuring that they're using all their resources effectively and efficiently? On the, on the governance side, you know, are they, do they have the right mix of people in place on the board? Are they regularly putting directors up for reappointment? So are they meeting all the things that are required for a well run company? So the Border to Coast through their analysts on the RI side and then also working with the investment side, is that a good long term investment? Do we want to be in that or do we want to sell out and go into something else? So I think kind of the, the underlying thing is ESG does not equal climate change. And there's been a, a big move that some people think that, and it absolutely isn't. It's about investing in good, well run companies that in 10 years' time will still be there giving us a good return for the fund. Sorry, can I just add one other thing? Claire's just reminded me, one of the things that we will be looking at, and I think it's mentioned in the training paper later, is going back to look at our investment beliefs. So how we invest the fund comes from the investment beliefs that the committee has. I think I mentioned it at the training day, we're looking to set up a day in November to go to Border to Coast offices, to work with their new Head of Advisory Service, to work with our consultant and independent advisor, to look at our strategic asset allocation, to look at our beliefs and set those things going forwards.
I just had a question about the McLeod remedy delay on the financial information on the benefit statement. I'm just thinking if, I don't know if this is the case, but if there's a member who's quite close to retirement and wants to retire, but looks at their benefit statement and thinks, I can't really afford to retire yet. But if the McLeod remedy information was on there, it might make them be able to retire. I don't know if that is the case. I think from previous conversations we've had, the information, the difference isn't like life changing. But I just thought it's worth asking because we, I do have people like teaching assistants come to me and say, I really want to retire, but I can't afford it at the moment. I'm just wondering if that would make a difference.
Yeah, the issue with not being able to put the information on the annual benefit statement is because our software provider, I say our, our administrator software provider hasn't provided that information update yet. So again, this is not just a Lincolnshire issue. I think Civica do about half of LGPS funds. What has happened though, what has gone out on the annual benefit statements is if you might be impacted, you will have a message on there saying that you fall under the McLeod remedy. So we will be in touch with you once we have that to let you know what that is. The other side, exactly as you say, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but the, the number of people that are actually impacted by it is minimal and actually the impact itself is minimal. If anyone was looking to retire, then there would be a manual calculation done to ensure that, so anyone retiring now will get the best of be it under, through, under the final salary, which is the McLeod remedy up to 22, or through CARE, the Career Average Scheme. So on an individual basis, that is calculated, but we were just unable, we didn't want to wait until Civica had managed to sort out the updates and then be late getting the information to the actuary to be able to ensure that we meet our valuation timetable, which is a statutory timetable. So I think we are, there's a number of funds, I would probably say most Civica funds have not been able to include that because the software provider's not, not where they should be.
So if someone is 64, let's say, and is thinking of retiring very soon, they could still get a personal statement? Yeah.
Absolutely. They would just need to contact the team at West Yorkshire and they can do that calculation manually.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Parnie?
Thank you. Can we just go back to the investment beliefs? If, as I understand it, we'll be looking at the investment belief strategy, whatever, for Lincolnshire's pension fund. If those are in devian, or not, don't match those of the other funds on Border Coast, is that something that then has to be sorted out through negotiation or, or what happens basically?
So the investment beliefs kind of work with the strategic asset allocation. So in the new world that we're moving into, we won't be able to say, for example, we would like to have of our 45% in equities, we would like half of that to be in UK and half of that in global, as an example. We will just say, we want 45% of the fund in equities, we want X% in fixed income, property, et cetera. So what we are doing is working with the advisory team at Border to Coast, that is just being developed and built up to ensure that our investment beliefs can be translated into what we, what we might have said previously. So we can't say we like active, we want to put our money into passive management or active management. That will be a decision of Border to Coast going forward. What we can say, and this is where we're trying to agree some common language across all of the partner funds and with Border to Coast, that perhaps we believe there is added value in the skill of investment managers, which you're saying, we believe in active management. So Border to Coast will interpret our investment beliefs, which is why we're trying to get that commonality of language for our own specific Lincolnshire allocation across their vehicles. On the responsible investment side or the stewardship side, the partner funds across Border to Coast do have very differing opinions. We have different net zero targets for those where they've been set. So within the regulations, it will allow for more than one offering of Border to Coast to meet that net zero journey, for example. So if you have someone that their committee decide they would like to divest, not hold any oil and gas stocks, as an example, then Border to Coast will be able to implement that in a slightly different way to those. So for example, ours would be, we believe in engagement, we want to ensure we look at material financial risk, but we don't want any blanket divestment policies. So they would then ensure that that was implemented. So the investment beliefs, I think, are probably best seen as how we ensure that through that common language, that we get the strategic asset allocation that the committee needs when that's implemented for our long term returns. Does that cover that?
Any further questions? Okay, then I'll propose we accept the report. We'll move on to the Pension Administrators' update now. Mac Mock, Head of Governance and Business Development at West Yorkshire Pension Fund will present this for us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman. Morning, everybody. This is the administration report from West Yorkshire Pension Fund. It is the period 1st of January 25 to the 31st of March 2025. I won't go through every point on the report, but I'll pick out a couple of salient points and explain those and take some questions afterwards. I think the starting point really though on this report should be an explanation around our performance and benchmarking or KPIs, key performance indicators. There's some new people in the room, so I'll explain what the measure is. Hopefully, they'll explain a bit more. We measure our performance, that's the performance of West Yorkshire Pension Fund. That's the performance to actually take data from employers and members, process a calculation, turn it into a benefit and pay a member. That's, that's the short answer. We measure the time it takes us to do that and we have target days and we report to you if we go over those target days. They're not the only days that might be included in that process because if we received information, let's say someone was retiring, we'll calculate the benefits and we're sending out to the member, we would stop the clock there and stop counting the days while we waited for the member to look at that paperwork, query it, make elections and send it back. We would start the clock again and then we would put it into payment. So these measures could be in several steps for one process. On these processes as well, which are listed in the appendix, they are prioritised. Number one, the most important to the member, I suppose, getting their benefits on time and correctly, to things that are perhaps just more administration, amending a record, somebody gives us a new address or their marital status or partnership status changes. So that would be a priority three. And then you can see in the report, we highlight some of those performances that haven't met in that period. All, all those areas have been highlighted, we don't just stop there, we monitor, we review that area, and we have a new Head of Service in post who is looking at the performances. And where needed, we may change the measure, we may also change where we measure or what step we measure in the process. The other thing I should highlight is there has been a standardisation of the target days for KPIs across the LGPS, and they are being included now in the annual report of accounts. So to make sure that we have a consistent report for you, we are changing for the next period, the target days measure. So you might see some of these, these targets change for the better or for the worse, but they now will be in alignment with other LGPS funds and the report and accounts for 2026. On the finance, I won't go through the finance bits, but I will bring to your attention the bits that start at 2.2. There is a very tiny error on the figures, it's 2P. Point 2.3, the paragraph underneath it is absolutely correct, 2.2 and 2.4 are two pence out. I will make sure that the corrective figures are sent to this committee. Policy changes, George has already mentioned policy changes, and I'm very happy that we have now ceased creation of these temporary bank accounts. They were done for the right reasons, to protect membership, members who haven't claimed their benefits at their normal pension age, and as soon as they get to an age of 75 and they claimed them, they would have an additional tax charge. So by making an election on their behalf and getting it put into payment, the fund thought that they were helping the member not pay this additional tax. We don't think that's the case, having sought legal advice, and I think George himself has the same opinion, actually, that we shouldn't be making any kind of election on the members' behalf. So the creation of new bank accounts has ceased regarding pensioners, and as for the five year refunds, well, we're waiting for legislation to change that that won't be an issue going forward either. The pension dashboard, I should probably just sort of explain briefly what it is. It is a government driven idea. They want the public, or citizens is a word that they use, to have access to all of their pensions and their pension administrators and to know their values. The reasoning behind this is that they believe there's £26 billion worth of pensions unclaimed nationally across public and private sector pensions. And obviously, if they were put into payment, then perhaps there would be less state benefits paid later in people's lives. We are well on course to meeting the statutory deadline, that's for us, us, Lincolnshire, West Yorkshire Pension. That's for us, us, Lincolnshire, West Yorkshire Pension Fund, going live on the dashboard by the thirty first of October this year. We will go through an audit process, but essentially, the information that we will be providing will be the members' information provided on the annual benefit statement. Just to reassure this committee, we are not giving members of the public, not even the scheme members, access to all of their details and all of their benefit values. We are just showing the information on the annual benefit statement, providing they meet a stringent matching criteria, and that is included in one of our appendix. What I should add to that is the go live date, as I've mentioned, is the thirty first of October. That is for pension funds, public sector pension funds. The public do not have a go live date yet. It's anticipated it will be six months after the go live date for us. But potentially, it could be just a six months notice period provided by DWP, which could be slightly before or any time after we go live. And we'll update this committee when we know what the date is. Branding, I was able to touch upon branding because I know it's quite a passionate thing here at Lincolnshire. Conversations have moved forward at West Yorkshire about changing a brand, creating a brand. There's been, it has been to our advisory panel and there have been two internal meetings that I've been part of. What I can add to that is that our advisory panel has been reformed with our, we have two, we have two committees, basically, and we've merged them together. So my understanding is that this will be taken back to them in a couple of weeks' time at their first meeting. Annual benefit statements have been mentioned. In your pack, it says we've achieved ninety four point seven percent. That's actually today ninety eight point five percent. Twenty three thousand four hundred and seventy five statements have been distributed. We have a hundred and twenty seven still to look at. This is quite normal, in case anyone is concerned, but that means that there is work being done. And perhaps best example is George's thirty thirty different records to be aggregated. We wouldn't send an annual benefit statement unless that piece of work has been completed and that may take longer than usual because of the size of that process or that piece of work. Well, I will add there, just picking up from what Joe was saying and the question that was asked around Civica and the MacLeod information, is quite right. Our software provider Civica was not able to provide the information that we required in time to include MacLeod on the statement. And we felt if we waited, just as other Civica clients feel the same, we would not have been able to produce these statements before the statutory deadline of the thirty first of August. And when I say we couldn't have produced them, that's produced any value. So there wouldn't have been twenty three thousand odd that were out of the door by now. It would have been zero. And I can confirm that the decision was well made by West Yorkshire Pension Fund and the partners in the shared service because the information that we need has still not been provided. It is not ideal, and I pick up the point that some members will be concerned that the values aren't a true reflection of their benefits and therefore they don't know whether they can retire or not. But just to reiterate sort of the size of this, I know there's statutory benefits and every member has an entitlement and that should be right. It should be paid on time. However, it is, the the MacLeod probably represents less than one percent of the membership. And of those that would be affected, then the payments would commonly be a hundred or a couple of hundred pounds a year difference in their pension values. So it is not life changing in that respect. There will be some outliers, of course, but but I'm just talking broadly. And as Joe has confirmed, if somebody is approaching retirement age or wishes to retire early, then if they contact us, we can provide the information via manual calculations. So so there really won't be a delay in anybody retiring and we can provide that information on a one to one basis. What we won't be able to do is is everybody say, well, I haven't got my MacLeod information. Can I please have an estimate? No, we can't. We just don't have the resource. So it is on a need to know basis, I need to retire or need to know how much my pension is so I can retire. And we will look at that for them. Part of the work that we do is working with pension regulator. It's all about the data that's provided to us and what we do with that because we must get those pension benefits right. And we have regular scores that we provide to the pension regulator and to this committee and to the board this afternoon. We have currently a score of common data, that's data that you would expecting an average pension scheme, a normal pension scheme, and we're hitting an accuracy rate of ninety six point six one percent. And then there's another score for scheme specific data. So that's something that we would expect in the LGPS. So perhaps part time hours, part time information weeks, hours worked, might be specific to us. And that's eighty nine point five six percent. However, what we have done at the request of Everly Lincolnshire is looked at this data a different way. We've inherited lots of data from previous administrators going back over many decades. And decades ago, and I think, and I think one of the members here mentioned it, it's much more complex today. Where it wasn't complex, that information may not have been recorded independently or might not be on a field on electronic record where we can read it and record it. So therefore, it would be recorded as an error. Once we get rid of the historic data, the data that we inherited, those scores rise and the common score rise to ninety eight point eight nine percent and the scheme specific to ninety eight point eight eight percent. That says to me that the data provided by the employers here and the way the data is provided and worked or provided also by the members and worked by West Yorkshire Pension Fund is far more accurate and reportable than the data of decades ago. And I think that is only a good thing. And I think, hopefully, you're pleased to hear, but I know the TPR will look at those scores and be quite impressed that we're nudging towards the hundred percent target. The other thing I should just mention, there is a note on here at three point two about normal pension age. This is the normal minimum pension age is going to increase in twenty twenty eight. It's going to increase to age fifty seven. We don't put that in the report. But the critical thing here is to consider is it will affect our members in twenty twenty eight. But because there are no regulations yet, we don't know how that will affect us. We don't know if we'll have protections for those in the scheme. And if we do, how far reaching they are, we'll bring that information to you when we know more. And that's it for me. Happy to take some questions, Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much for the report. There was one thing I was very happy about because, of course, this is my first committee, so I'm getting used to these reports. But on page forty four and forty five, I was very happy to see the level of detail that you show on underperformance, right down to the problems relating to one single member. I really like seeing that sort of transparency in a report, so thank you very much for that. Could I just ask a question, please, on page fifty one? It's more, it's not about the fund itself. It's about work point two point three five and two point three six. It's about the way you're working with young people. You say you continue to work with sixth form schools and colleges in the Bradford and Leeds area as they leave school at eighteen. Could you just give me a bit of information, what you mean by working with them? And is this, this sounds like really good opportunity stuff. And is this something that is available elsewhere within the fund area? Thank you very much.
That's a good question. So I'll take the second part, available elsewhere. I think we are looking, expanding where we may look to recruit. We have an office here in Lincolnshire. If we recruited to this office, although would be employees of West Yorkshire Pension Fund, why shouldn't they be recruited from the local area? And I think there has been some early discussions on that. So 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 I think that's right. This is quite new. This is probably eighteen months, two years in the making. So so and it's come from us, us being West Yorkshire Pension Fund, struggling to recruit and retain staff in our area. We're not an affluent area, West Yorkshire Pension Fund. Bradford is not very affluent. Our salaries commonly, even within local government, are not as high as other areas. So why would people come and work for us? People leaving university might not come back to the area and if they did, they would expect a remuneration significantly higher than we could offer. But if we can talk to those sixth form schools, I mean, one of them there is a maths, a sixth form math schools. So we want people, and I do make fun a little bit, can count and like counting, yeah? They could have a career within pensions. You could be an administrator. You could be an investment consultant and an analyst. You could work in HR within pensions. The key is talking to these people and making sure they understand that there's there's different feathers in our cap. And it can be interesting, not just for us that are getting nearer to retirement age, but those that are starting on a career. And it is a good career. And it has started to pay dividends with our recruitment now and our retention is the highest it's been in the four years that I've been there. So so I think, yeah, we are going to expand where we look and we're working on people because we struggled to recruit and retain a few years ago.
Just on that, the lack of recruit, I don't really understand what you're saying because in West Yorkshire, assuming you just recruit from West Yorkshire, because frankly, most of this stuff can be done from anywhere in the world, actually. So why can't you recruit there? But if wage levels are low in West Yorkshire, which I'm sure they are, if you get a job with your organisation, I would suspect your average salary is much higher than the locals. So I don't really understand why, I mean, whether it's a general thing across the whole sector or what. So I don't really understand the reasoning behind that because there must be a solution.
Well, if you look at our pension officer jobs at West Yorkshire, they start in the mid twenties. If you look for a pension officer job in a London area, it might start in the mid thirties. I understand that the local government generally would have an average salary of about eighteen thousand pounds. And if that's the case, that's well below the national average earnings, which I think is around thirty seven thousand pounds. Now, it's not perhaps.
So aren't you paying people enough?
No, we, we, I personally don't. I mean, as a southerner, I don't live in West Yorkshire Pension Fund. And post pandemic, I made a career decision that I didn't want to work in London. So I can tell you, I took a twenty thousand pound drop to go and work at West Yorkshire Pension Fund. Had I not done that, I'd probably still be working in London and probably very unhappy. I'm not unhappy now, by the way. Does that help? Does that help towards the question?
I think I understand, but I think there is a genuine question of your employers working hard enough to resolve that. Because I do know, and I know it's a bit of a balance. There are frequent complaints about people, I haven't got my figures back from West Yorkshire. And I know there's a balance that some some employees are obsessed by what their pension will be. There are some who are considering retirement or staying. And I think there is, I think you would admit, there is an issue. I don't think that's measured on the dashboard, how long it takes West Yorkshire to get back to someone to give them their advice. I appreciate there'll be some frequent flyers who probably, you know, just get on with the job you're paid to do and worry about your pension some other time. But I think it's not measured on the dashboard, is it? That's one of those subtle, sort of soft measures.
Lisa will know better than me as she flicks through the pages. Is there a measure?
Sorry, I'll switch off.
Sorry, yeah, we do do pension estimates and that's it. The scores we should reach ninety percent and we're reaching ninety three point two three percent. So we are definitely getting members' information out to them in a timely manner.
So is it measured on how quickly you get back to them? What exactly is the measure? Is it the measure once we've, once we've finally got, you know, because as we know, you try and ring any organisation up now, they only start counting when you finally get through to somebody. Or do they just get a bot who then sort of, I just, you know, just not getting it you, but this is the way of the world, I'm afraid, these days.
Yeah, so the the measure's ten days. So it's the point of receiving the estimate request from a member, either verbally or through an employer. And then we've got ten days to produce that pension estimate either back to the member, depending on what the reason for the estimate is. And we're exceeding our target at ninety percent.
I mean, I think there's a question also, how, when will this Civica issue be resolved?
But the Civica issue.
Obviously, once there's a pension dashboard, in theory, any employee can just go on it and look for themselves. Is that how it's going to work?
Yes, they can see all the pension pots that they've got.
There'll be less cost to you servicing that, hopefully.
Yeah, and annual benefit statements give members lots of information about.
They could self serve.
Yeah, and there is the MyPension portal where they can do online estimates themselves, as long as they're age related, not not anything else.
Next question is on the appendix A. There's the arrows. I don't understand what do the red arrows mean? And while I'm about it, one of them is it's a number one priority, death grant to set up, and that's going backwards. So A, what does the red mean? Does that mean it's a highlight? And secondly, why is the priority one there going backwards?
No, you're right to highlight that. A red arrow would mean that it's not meeting the target. Okay, so so red for stop, red for fail. Green means it is. And if the direction of the arrow is up, it means it's been proved on the last period. And if it's down, it's not been as good as the last period. That one in particular, we are monitoring. There have been some changes in that area of our administration and we acknowledge it needs, you know, more resource and it needs to be, the actual process itself needs a bit of work. Generally, we're very good on death because priority number one, that's that's the, you know, member benefit beneficiary dependent wellbeing. So we would look to that to get it completed on time.
So what does that mean? You know, obviously, I presume a death grant is when somebody dies is the dependents who then. So is it, how quickly is it? Is there a problem? Because it's just quite serious because you're talking about people who are in a, you know, had a traumatic experience. So you're saying, well, we're looking at it. Well.
Well, no, we are reviewing it. I mean, the part of the issue that we faced on that team historically is that they're quite passionate about what they do and they sort of keep, keep, keep the files on their work trays instead of closing them off. So if I'd received information of a death and then I sent out the information to the beneficiary, the partner, instead of closing it off and stopping that measure process because we've sent it out to the member or the beneficiaries, we shouldn't count how long it takes them to bring it back. Some members of the team would like to keep it open so they can react to it when it comes in. That's where we need to review the process. We've had some change of staff in the area as well and we've trained them, which has slowed it down. But it is, it is on our radar and the new head is looking at that in particular of the areas that we haven't met.
Key thing is, how long does it take from somebody dying to their dependents? A, getting the advice and then getting the money that they're due. And there's another one, which dependent pension to set up, which sounds related, which is again, in red, going backwards.
I believe that one's a payroll issue. That that whole process needs to be reviewed. We complete the work on time. Let's say we complete it today, but payroll shut yesterday. We can't physically give the, pay that money out. So if payroll isn't, isn't being run again for another three weeks, it's going to be at least three weeks before that money is paid to the member. And that's a standard practice across the country. We can't just keep paying people. It must go through a payroll. It must be taxed appropriately. So we need to change that measure. We can't say that that period where we can, we can't physically do any work, we should be monitoring that because we shouldn't. We should be saying, that's ready for payment today, full stop. Or we should be pausing it until it reaches payroll and payroll is open and then record the last day or two from there. That's why that that is failing and that's been failing regularly. The thing about the pension into payment is when the pension is into payment, even if it's been paused while we wait for the next payroll to open, the any death grant that is due would already have been paid. And the regulations about making payments, about pensions, is making payment at the next available payroll. So this again is common practice. It's just a really poor measure that we have at the moment. And it is a little bit misleading.
George Graham? Are there any other questions? Okay, I've got a couple. You say if we can get rid of the older data, our stats will improve. What do you mean by getting rid of the older data?
Right, my terminology, good point. We haven't got rid of the data. We're just not including it in that second report. So for example, there's an element that always fails in the data. It's about guaranteed minimum pensions, GMP, if anyone knows. And it refers to national insurance contributions pre twenty sixteen and the SERPs pensions, state earning related pension schemes. That data is required by the TPR. But a couple of decades ago, that information was recorded. It was included on the pension values when they were put into payment, but it wasn't shown on the pension record anywhere. So because that field hasn't been populated twenty years ago and we run a report off the electronic record, it would always show that as a fail. And we do know that we've got several thousand of those.
So so you're saying we're never going to get that data?
We've got the data in the paper files that were then digitalised and it sits now in the the digital copy of them. So there could be a couple of hundred. in the digital copy of them. So there could be a couple of hundred pages of them, it's there. So unless we go through it record by record, page by page, we'll never get that populated. So there's a couple of things with that. First of all, there are things, readers, that could find that information. And we did look at that for the shared service, but the cost we felt was prohibitive in the end. It was somewhere around about a hundred and fifty thousand pounds for the software. It seemed a lot of money. Because when there is an event, when a deferred benefit with these GMPs on them is put into payment, our staff go through and manually find that and put it on the record. So as soon as it goes from deferred to pensioner, it will be correct. And should the member die, and therefore there is then other benefits to pay, whether it's a death grant and pension, et cetera, to beneficiary, they would also go through and find that data and put it on the record. So sooner or later, it will be corrected, but it would take decades at this rate to do it. Which is why I think that it was asked by particularly George and the previous Chair of the Pension Board, to see if we could look at current data, what you provide us now, and what you've provided us since we've taken over the administration. And that's the information. We've provided both sets. So I suppose it might be a question to George this afternoon, or to yourself, do you want two sets going forward, or do you just want the current value?
Okay. Secondly, is, do you get feedback from the pensioners who are asking questions? So is there a feedback form sent to them once they've asked?
We do survey a significant number of our scheme members, actives, deferreds, and pensioners. Because, you know, if you have a material event, you're leaving, you're retiring, someone's died, maybe not so much. But we would ask them their experience with the administration. When we send out paper forms, we got quite reasonable returns. But that takes one member of staff up to two weeks a month to do that. And it was felt within the shared service that probably wasn't the best use of that person's time. They're a pensions professional. So we do these electronically by email. And although we're doing them in their hundreds each month, we're getting them back in their dozens. And we do need to do some work on what is the best way to survey the scheme members. We have an answer. Every committee and board through the shared service, we ask, does anybody have any ideas? Because we've gone through lots of ideas, you know, from auto responses to contacting a specific group at a specific time, to offering a voucher. I'm not keen on that. Inducement doesn't sit well with me, and can actually skew the results. So we've been through a whole thought process, and we haven't moved that on yet. So we'd always welcome some input and ideas on surveys.
Thank you. The last one is really on for the red arrows.
Yeah.
Could you just update the key information of the red arrows?
Nothing on the arrows. Yep, we'll do that for the next report.
Any further questions? Okay, then I propose to accept the report. Thank you. Let's move on to item seven, LGPS Fit for the Future Consultation Response. Joe Kempton is going to give the report.
Thank you, Chairman. So this paper updates the committee on the government's response to the Fit for the Future consultation, and details what Border to Coast is doing to ensure it can meet the requirements of the upcoming Pension Schemes Bill. Recommendations here are that the committee considers and notes the report, and that it indicates whether there are any issues of concern at this stage, which officers should factor into their work to address the government's proposals. So the government proposes to implement its proposal set out in the consultation with very minor amendments. There are three areas to the proposals: pooling, local investment, and governance of funds and pools. And details of the changes from the original consultation are set out in paragraphs two point three to two point five. Pension Schemes Bill, which was introduced to Parliament on the fifth of June, is expected to receive royal assent in 2026, with subsequent regulations and guidance to set out more detail. And section three sets out the LGPS elements of the bill, because this cover other DB schemes and DC schemes, define contribution schemes. What I'll do is, though, I'll just highlight that the key changes in respect of the committee's role as a result of this bill. So in setting the strategic asset allocation, so this is how are those assets, that three and a half billion allocated across the various asset classes, the line between the committee setting the allocation and Border to Coast implementing it has been clearly set. Currently, the committee have been able to decide how much they'd like in UK equities, or global equities, for example, and whether that's invested actively or passively, and which sub-funds that Border to Coast offers that they wish to invest in. So this is changing, and the asset allocation will be made at the highest level, according to a template that is set out within the consultation response, looking at how much in equities, bonds, property, cash, et cetera. And Border to Coast will be fully responsible for how they implement that asset allocation. This will mean, as I mentioned earlier, we'll be, need to be really clear in our investment beliefs, what our risk return requirements are, in the language that we use, to ensure that Border to Coast are able to translate the committee's beliefs into an effective asset allocation. The second point is that all assets will either have to be transitioned to Border to Coast or under their management. So for example, where legacy assets in the fund are in runoff, so this might be a private equity investment, that those vehicles can last for fifteen years, we're no longer putting money in, but there will be money coming back over a period of years. It's not cost effective to actually transition the ownership of those legacy assets across. So this means that actually all the current external managers that we have, for example, Morgan Stanley, will have their assets moved, and Border to Coast will be responsible for managing a hundred percent of Lincolnshire Pension Fund's assets from the first of April 2026. The third one is that the asset pool is to be the primary advisor to the funds. So the relationship that we have with Hyman's Robertson, as our investment consultant, will change going forwards. And the committee will need to review how they gain independent oversight of the pool's activities. And this is expected to be done collaboratively with the other Border to Coast partner funds. There'll also be a requirement for pension committee members, senior officer and officers, to have appropriate knowledge of level, an appropriate level of knowledge and understanding for their roles, with the requirements for the pension committee members and local pension board members being aligned. This means moving from a requirement for collective knowledge of the committee, which it currently is, to individual knowledge requirements. The fifth key point is that the fund will have to appoint an independent advisor to work with the committee. So this is different to our current independent investment advisor. This will be looking more widely across all aspects of managing the fund and providing the committee with advice and assistance. The committee will also have to appoint a senior LGPS officer with overall delegated responsibility for the management and administration of the scheme. So this will change some of the current delegations that are currently set out in the constitution. And the final key one is that the fund will be subject to a triennial governance review, which will have to be submitted to MHCLG. And if found to be failing, then the Secretary of State will have power to actually bring in either the pensions regulator, and the ultimate power would be that they could require that fund to merge with another pension fund to improve that governance. So some fairly big changes on the landscape. In addition to the consultation, all asset pools were also required to make a submission indicating how they would develop their current capabilities and arrangements within the timeline set. And section four sets out Border to Coast approach, and further detail is attached at Appendix A. As part of their consolidation plans, government also decided that two of the asset pools, so we currently have eight, two of them, Access, which has funds in the South East, and Brunel, which has funds in the South West, that they did not meet government's requirements going forwards. So the twenty one funds within those two asset pools have been told that they must find a new asset pool to join. And they have a deadline of the thirtieth of September to express their preferred pool. So officers are working with Border to Coast on the approach to taking on any new partner funds, along with creating the new capabilities required to build the advisory service, the legacy asset management, and the local investment offering that we'll need to provide. The work required from the expected outcomes of the Fit for the Future consultation was factored into the fund's business plan, which was brought to this committee in March. But there is a lot of work to be done in a reasonably short timeframe. So we will, of course, keep the committee up to date as anything changes and as decisions need to be made. But I'll happily take any questions on that. Thank you.
councillor Woods?
Thank you, Chair. What rules and directions are Border to Coast putting in place to govern the new government proposals to local investment? And how is local investment defined?
Thank you. So local investment is being defined as an administration authority's area. It's combined authority area, or the regional area of the pool. Now, Border to Coast is not fully joined up, so it has funds across the, kind of the North West to the North East to Lincolnshire. But then we have some that are disjointed, being Surrey, Warwickshire, and Bedfordshire. So the local is a bit of an unusual one. The hope from the Lincolnshire Fund was that local would be UK, because that gives us the widest opportunity set. Now, that pool region will change if we have new partner funds come in. So we can't really say what that local means at the moment. But I think for the Lincolnshire Fund, we would always like that to be as wide an opportunity set as possible, because it is about ensuring we get the best investment return that we can within the risk framework that we would like. What we're doing with Border to Coast, because again, different funds in Border to Coast do things differently. So there are some that have embraced local investment for years. South Yorkshire, George's Fund, being one of them, where they already work with the authority to look at specific local investments. We've never done it in Lincolnshire, because there are a number of potential conflicts that can come in from doing that, particularly if an investment doesn't particularly do very well. So Border to Coast will be offering a number of different options as to how this is done. So they have a UK Opportunities Fund, which came in in April twenty four, which invests in UK, in private markets across the UK. This was when the government had set a levelling up target to try and increase investment into the UK. So it's very similar now to what's being required under kind of contributing to the UK productive finance. So the UK Opportunity Fund is one way, we would be able to access local in its broadest sense. We also, within the new changes, have a responsibility to talk with our combined authority to understand their potential requirements. So in order to facilitate that, we'll be working with Border to Coast to set up some sort of a function, a template. So if our combined authority comes to the fund and says we have a great investment idea, we'd like the fund to invest in. And of course, remembering that the combined authority covers both East Riding Pension Fund and Lincolnshire Pension Fund. We will be able to say, if you can complete this information, we will pass it across to Border to Coast, to then direct to investment management, investment managers that they have relationships with, that may be able to provide funding to these investment opportunities. Within the regulations, though, the responsibility for making those local investments, it's squarely with Border to Coast, with the asset pool. So that does remove one of the potential conflicts of interest in the fund potentially being pressured into making what are considered good local investments, but would not actually meet our hurdle of return. And then there are other options where through the, some investments identified in the UK Opportunity Fund, some funds might be able to invest in a sidecar in a specific regional element of that. So this is still very much being developed, because this only came out recently. We had been looking at this as part of the 2030 strategy with Border to Coast, about how we can facilitate better local investment, particularly in funds like ours, where we do not have the resource internally to actually do that due diligence that would be required in making what, in the scheme of things, will be quite a small amount of investment, even if it's fifty million. Actually, that's not really going to move the needle across the three and a half billion pounds. So it's about ensuring that the decisions are made by those that fully understand what the need is for that investment, what the required returns are, working with the professional investment managers. And we are kind of that conduit to pass on ideas and ensure the right information gets passed across to Border to Coast, for them to make the analysis, the decision, and we can then feed back. So it's a work in progress at the moment. Sorry, that's quite a convoluted answer. But it's a, we're still working on how exactly that's going to pan out. And we've got till the first of April to have something in place for that.
Thank you, Joe. councillor Hill?
Yeah, I mean, when this pooling arrangement came in place, I was highly sceptical, I have to say. And I was reassured at the time that, don't worry, the Lincolnshire Pool will be a separate pool within the bigger pool. That has now been removed. And it is ironic, we're being told we've got to get more training and get more knowledge on an individual basis. At the same time, our actual direct control is being taken away from us. So there is a big irony there that, doing it. I'm very sceptic about this, because it's no secret that Chancellors of the Exchequer for many years now have been, their greedy eyes are on pension funds, to make sure they can grab those pension funds to cover up the incompetence governments have made over many, many years, because they haven't invested properly in this country. So I think there is a massive conflict of interest here between our fiduciary duty, which is to protect the pension fund, make sure that the people are paid into the pension fund, employers and employees are protected and they are looked after. My big worry is with local, and I think, what is local? I think that's a very good question. Oh, it's UK. Where does it come to the point that the best benefit for the pension fund is to invest outside the UK, whereas somebody, the government will come along and say, no, you've got to do this. And by the way, if you don't do what we say you'll do, we'll just remove you and give you to somebody else. This is quite serious, actually. And I don't think it will affect us, but I can see in years to come, there will be scandals. And we've known in the past that pension funds, both in local government and in the private sector, money has just disappeared, stupid investments have been made for the right reasons. But I think it's very serious. I know the point has been made by, to the consultation, which basically, apart from the triennial view, the government's ignored most of the rest, hasn't it? So I think this is really serious. And of course, what can we do about it? Well, no, well, Border to Coast will decide all this. You know, and you've got Lincolnshire, which traditionally has not really been into local investments. You've got West Yorkshire, who have been very much into it. I don't know what the issues are, but who's done better. But I think it's a really serious issue. And I think there's a massive danger that in the future, not for us, but future people who are looking after this pension fund in twenty years' time, I can almost predict there will be problems. Because you'll end up with very few pension, regional pension funds, who are probably not looking after their members as best they can, because they are being put under pressure. So I don't know what can be done about this. But I would just like to book on record that I am very concerned about the direction of travel. And I don't trust Chancellors of the Exchequer to get their mitts on money which is not theirs.
Thank you, councillor Hill. I'd like to say, I totally agree with you. I see this as a first step in relieving our pension fund of its ability to control it, and the government dictating as to where we put the pension fund money that impinges on our fiduciary duties. As you say, I'm not sure what, if anything, we can do. And I'm certain, as you are, in the future, there will be scandals around this. All we can do is raise our voice and make that change, or try to make that change, and it doesn't happen. Sorry, is there anyone else have a question? councillor Brockway?
Thank you, Chairman. Yeah, similar comments, with similar thoughts have been going through my mind. You know, we all remember Gordon Brown and his pension raids. And this, you know, pension funds are people's private money. It's their deferred salary. And I think we need to actually remember that. It is not a benefit, it is their right, they've paid for it. And I think we need to be fighting that corner, actually, because it affects everybody, everybody who's paid into a pension fund. The thing that worries me as well, I've been looking at page eighty nine, one point five, it gives us a short- The thing that worries me as well, I've been looking at page 89, 1.5, it gives us assurance about the size of Border to Coast, but size doesn't mean everything, size doesn't necessarily give assurance. They may be an excellent organisation, I don't know them yet because I'm new on this committee. However, we have plenty of examples of massive financial institutions and asset managers and banks going crashing over the last few years, and I am very alarmed that all our funds, it's almost like putting all your eggs in one basket. Now, Jo has already explained about assets being elsewhere, and, but if it is controlled from the same central point, I do have concerns about that, and I wonder how we can increase and improve our oversight, or, you know, are the protections, is that oversight already there? In which case, I personally would need to learn about it. But the other thing I wanted to raise, Chairman, this business of individual accountability, now, I get that, I understand, there does have to be individual accountability, but pensions are a very, very complex area. So prior to coming to this committee, when I was reading the reports, I was actually reading through definitions of such words as derivatives and futures to make sure my understanding was on point, and then rereading the paragraphs because I am not a financier. And, okay, that's fine, but the complexities are such that I would say to have proper individual accountability, you're probably talking three or four years of solid training for people who have the ability to take on the understanding in the first place. Now, councillors are elected from any member of the population, pretty much, with a few particular exclusions, and although it's unlikely, you could have a situation where any given council hasn't got financially astute and trained people to take on that proper knowledge which would give meaning to the accountability. We are accountable by sitting here, but the knowledge, certainly in my case, isn't there yet. Now, I'm working on it, but can you see my alarm? So, the two areas would be individual accountability, I'm going to go for it and learn as much as I can, but it's going to take time, but also this business of all our eggs in one basket, I find that very worrying, regardless of the integrity of the organisation. Thank you, Chairman.
Any other questions? councillor Kay? Oh, sorry. Jo?
Could I just come back on some of that? Just, one of the things that we will do and we will look at in that away day to Leeds is what our local investment strategy is, because it does say in there, the government have stopped short of setting a target and saying you must have X amount, it says you will have to develop a local investment strategy. Now, this is some work that we'll do. So our strategy could be, we have between naught and five per cent in local investment. Now, I think the positive aspect of what I think we're doing with Border to Coast is that it will be investment professionals that will look at that, so, and decide whether or not that is actually a good investment for the pension fund, not whether it's a good use of our money to assist building a bypass around somewhere, but is that a good investment? Will that give us the required return? And often, for a lot of these capital projects, things that combined authorities or authorities are wanting money for, they can get a far better loan through PWLB than perhaps a seven per cent hurdle that we might ask for. So I think there is hopefully some reassurance built into the process that we're building with Border to Coast, that anything that gets invested in, and we will do it through a fund, it wouldn't just be Lincolnshire looking at something, will have met all the requirements from a professional investment manager to say this is a good investment opportunity. So I think that does remove some of that potential political or local conflicts or pressure that could come otherwise, if it was just for someone bringing something to the committee, saying we think this is a great opportunity, it will reduce our social services budget because we're going to be building some adult care homes, or whatever the request is that comes in, in ensuring that it goes through that really clear, auditable process of it's been assessed as a, as an investment, not as a, is this some way we can assist the combined authority or the authority in providing additional finance? So it's, I think, hopefully that provides some assurance, and we will look to how we frame that local investment strategy to ensure that the committee is comfortable, that we've got all those checks and balances in place. The other thing about the individual knowledge, absolutely understand the issue there, you know, the committee are asked to, to understand and take on the accountability for, it's a lot of money, it's a very complex and technical area, be it the administration, be it the investments, you know, across the whole remit. What will not be going are those external advisers, though, we will still have external advisers, professionals that are there to assist the committee, to help them challenge Border to Coast, to help them challenge any of the underlying managers, to challenge our actuary, or whoever, to ensure that you're still going to be getting that professional advice. And there will be an advisory arm that Border to Coast are having to set up that will work with the committee. And within that oversight rule that we do as partner funds, we'll be ensuring that that advisory service is working on behalf of the partner funds and not just what works well for Border to Coast. So we've already had discussions about how we ensure that any conflicts there are seen and managed. So there's a lot of work that is going into, you know, if we stand back, we have to do this, we do not have a choice, it's going to be put into statute. So what we want to do as all the partner funds in Border to Coast and across the LGPS, because we're all being forced down this route, is make sure that whatever we do, it's for the best outcome for the pension fund within the envelope of how we're able to work. So hopefully that provides some reassurance, but there will always be that guidance from external advisers, from officers, and through Border to Coast as well, who are owned by us. This isn't an asset management company that's out there just wanting to make huge profits, their role is tied to us to ensure we pay pensions over the long term and do the best for the LGPS.
councillor Kay?
Thank you, Chair. It's just, to me, now, I've been on here for a couple of, quite a while now, but when I was on the county before, I was on pensions, give that. But it seems to me that, listening to councillor Hill and Brockway have been saying, it's like, you know, councillors are expected to do A, B, and C, but powers have been diluted away, for what you've just said and what my manager's said. The only thing is, is, as I concede, is, we have our officers who do a brilliant job, and that's what they're for, to advise us, but it seems that the buck stops with us as councillors, when you're making a decision. If it goes wrong, who'll get the blame? Us, right? But I find that a little bit unfair, on the point that, like Jackie says, is, everybody is not trained to the ability of the professionals, we are not, right? So if we happen to get a bit upset, and the actual gentleman on about, used to bring this up regularly, councillor Allen, I think it was, was that his name? Who used to be vehement about this sort of thing, and, you know, the power's going away, and I just feel he's, well, in the long run, well, what are we set here for? If, if it keeps, you know, decisions are going elsewhere, but the Border to Coast thing, I can't, what Jo's just said there, it's hard to get your head around that we own something, yet the government are making us take notice of them. So unless I've got it wrong, they're going to tell us, basically, what to do where we supposedly own them. I, it's bizarre. I think we should go back to a sort of system, if the committee is responsible, then let the committee make the decisions. Thank you, Chair.
Do you want to, do you want to take that one, Jo?
I think the issue is, it's going to be in statute, these are the regulations that we have to work within, so we, you know, we don't have an option not to do what government are telling us to at this point in time. So, as I say, I think all we can do is work, and Border to Coast will not just be telling us what to do, they will be working with us, and we will be working in partnership. I think that's one thing to, you know, that's one thing that Border to Coast, in building Border to Coast, all the partner funds are heavily involved, the amount of time that we spend with our colleagues across the other ten partner funds, the amount of time the joint committee spends looking at things, the senior officers spend doing this. So we very much work with Border to Coast, and we've had these discussions to ensure that, you know, we need to ensure that that ethos, any new partner funds coming in, that ethos is maintained, that we are a partnership, we work with Border to Coast. But Border to Coast will be the investment professionals, so they are an FCA-regulated company, so they have to meet certain levels of compliance, and again, that in itself should provide assurance that they, they will do what's best for us. But we, we have a number of different oversight channels to ensure that we can monitor, we can manage, we can work with Border to Coast to ensure that they don't go rogue, for want of a better word. But at the end of the day, we do not have a choice, and we have to work within the regulations that are set, but our aim is to ensure we get the best outcome for the Lincolnshire Pension Fund first and foremost, for the other partner funds as well, and for the whole of the LGPS. So I can hopefully only just keep bringing that reassurance back with the work we do with Border to Coast, with the work that the joint committee do, to share the oversight that is done, the outcome that comes from that.
councillor Hill?
We don't own Border to Coast, we own 10%, is it? Irrespective of size of pension fund? We don't actually own it outright, so your reassurance that, from our perspective, we don't own it, we partly own it, right?
Yeah, 1.11%.
councillor Kay, actually, very eloquently, actually, it's not the problem with Border to Coast, it's the problem with government, and there is now a conflict, because the legislation which is being pushed through is in direct conflict of our fiduciary duties, potentially. So I foresee, and it won't be an individual thing for one pension fund, there could come a time when what the government, if the government pushes this much further, there could be a legal challenge, and I think the thought is, how is that going about? Because I think Paul's dead right. The issue is, we're supposed to be doing all these things, we're given a statutory duty to do all these things, and yet government's coming in saying, well, you'll do it our way, or, you know, we'll get, so I think there will be a chance. Well, I don't think, nothing can be done, but I think if it comes to the point where there is a, something which is being done incorrectly, you know, we've got somebody currently who's Chancellor of the Exchequer, who was Rachel from Accounts, I mean, it doesn't give you a lot of confidence, does it, that these sort of people are amateurs like ourselves, who then start saying, we're going to do this, that, and the other. So I think there will be, potentially, there could be a legal challenge, and I don't know what LGA or other sort of collective people are thinking about that, because it is very serious, very serious.
Again, I can't disagree with you at all on that. I have seen in the news statements to that effect that it is, or people are thinking about legal challenges, and it might be something that we should set our minds to within Border to Coast, or, because I don't really feel comfortable with the direction the government is pushing us into there. I don't know what steps that we can take to back that up, if any.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to get and can't get political, I mean, in the response to the consultation, there were a lot of areas where the majority of respondents disagreed with things that were in there, but they have been pushed through. So as I say, as an officer and as responsible for managing the Lincolnshire Pension Fund, my role is just to make sure that we do the absolute best we can in our oversight, working with Border to Coast. I think we don't want to see them as an us and them, we absolutely want, no, but they, we are just having to do what is being set out in the upcoming statutes and the regulations and statutory guidance, but we ensure that we've got as many safety belts within that to ensure that we can do it to the best of our abilities for the best outcome. Sorry, I'm repeating myself, but I don't think that, unfortunately, that there's, there's much more I can say when it's, government have put this through, regardless of the responses to the consultation, where in a lot of these aspects, they were not in favour of these being pushed through.
councillor Bunny?
Thank you, Jack. Can we be, can you give us some sort of agreement that you will be taking this forward at the joint group, the possibility of looking at the legal challenge, or how we do make sure that this is fully investigated? Because I think it's a great worry that we are being imposed on here, and I know, as councillor Kay said, it was a very great concern from previous meetings as well.
I will definitely raise it at the meetings, and I'm not sure what I can do within the legal things, however, I will be looking into it, and I will get back to you with any information I have. Sorry, councillor Hill?
Thank you, I think we're on the same, it would be helpful if there was a recommendation from this committee to yourself, to actually go back to the joint committee, to say, look, we need to at least prepare ourselves, look at legal, legal options. There's nothing wrong at the moment, but I think if, we could have a recommendation, if you'd accept that, that would be brilliant.
Yes, I will. Would you mind putting that in an email and sending it to me, so as I can take that up with them?
Well, could we actually have a vote on that today? So in fact, I appreciate the content might go in the email, but I do think it'd be important, and I'm quite happy to second what councillor Hill says, that we actually make that as a recommendation from this group, that we instruct you to take it to the joint committee on our behalf.
So shall we have a recommendation that the chairman takes to the joint committee, the concerns raised about the fiduciary duty being able to be met by the committee, given the reduction in their powers in managing the pension fund, something, some wording?
Votes for? Votes against? Abstentions? Passed. Are there any further questions on? councillor Roberts?
Yes, just to come back to the point about local investment, which obviously is part of this government idea, I think, I think it might have been councillor Hill that said that it could be because they're running out of money, and they see, with the first time without getting political, Labour Government's seen pension pots as an open door. However, I do believe that, I think I've asked this question before, actually, about, that you've obviously got this pension pot, and in many ways, it would be good to see the money invested locally. I know, obviously, the main reason for the pension pot and for your job is to make sure you make money and whatever, but I suspect when it comes to funding the bypass due to current yields, gilts, we're going to be having to spend high interest. Whether or not it's something that could be looked into, whether the actual pension pot actually invests the money into that at a rate that may not make massive amounts of profit, but would actually be a similar cost of what we'd have to try and invest to act, so therefore, I'm sure that most of the people in the pension fund in Lincolnshire would be probably quite happy to know that their pot is being used in an investment locally, albeit not at massive profit, but at a break-even point.
Can I? Can I just step in here? So, so the only reason for the pension pot is to pay future pensions, it's not the main reason, it's the only, only reason, just to be clear on that. And in terms of local investment, whatever investment options are put forward, they need to go through Border to Coast and any due diligence done, as will be required, and I think part of the changes that the government is making is to make sure the professionals are the ones that are making those kind of decisions to support the funds to meet their fiduciary duty. I can't imagine there's ever going to be an option where the funding of the North Hikam Relief Road won't be cheaper done through the current routes, which is PWLB, as opposed to the rate of return that's going to be required by a pension fund.
As long as any investment fits our fiduciary duty, and what Border to Coast has lined out for us, then there is the option. out for us, then there is the option to do it.
And if, if I could just add one last thing, please. It's just that actually of our 8,200 members, they're not necessarily all local to Lincolnshire. Our active members will be working in Lincolnshire, but they may live in Nottinghamshire or East Riding or wherever, outside the boundaries. Our pensioners could live anywhere, our deferred members could live anywhere, because they will have just worked for a Lincolnshire employer at some point in their life. So I think there is sometimes the assumption that because we're Lincolnshire Pension Fund, all our membership is Lincolnshire, it is not. So we might have someone who their local is Essex, for example, Matt's gone. But, so I think, again, that's, that's another reason, you know, what, what actually is local, you know, UK. If it's a good investment opportunity, the question is, why would we not be doing it? But that's for our investment managers, the professionals, to make that analysis and that decision. And I think with local investment, that would be the route that we would want the Lincolnshire Fund to go down. If it's a good investment with a good return and a good risk profile, and provides whether it's the income return that we're looking for or the growth expectations, why would we not invest? But that should be open for every investment that we do. So if I could just add that, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Then can I suggest we note the report and the comments and move on?
Sorry, with the recommendation, yeah.
Move on to item eight, the annual report of accounts 2425, draft account audit plan and audit update. Claire?
Thank you, chairman. The report today covers the preparation of the pension fund accounts and gives an update on the annual report. The report also brings the final audit plan for the 2425 accounts to the committee, and KPMG will provide an update on their audit work to date. The recommendation is that the committee approve the draft pension fund accounts and note the external auditor's update. The pension fund accounts were completed for the 31st of May and shared with the external auditor for them to start their work. They were then published alongside the county council's accounts by the statutory deadline of the end of June. And a copy of the accounts for the pension fund can be found at appendix A to the report. The accounts are currently being audited and KPMG will provide an update on that later in the item. The accounts have been prepared in accordance with the guidance as set out in the Code of Practice for Local Authorities. And the accounts show you for the fund, income and expenditure for the year alongside the investment assets that we held at the 31st of March 2025. There's also supporting notes which provide further information on those two statements and on the fund more generally, and they cover such things as the accounting policies. There's also information from the actuary on the funding arrangements and the value of future retirement benefits and disclosures such as related party transactions and future capital commitments. As in previous years, the value of unquoted assets may be subject to change from the draft accounts presented today to the final accounts published in the annual report later in the year. This is due to the timing of the information that we receive. So listed assets, we should get a value for very shortly after the accounting date, whereas for unquoted assets, we need to wait for them maybe to have their own accounts audited for them to be able to provide us with values for our accounts. As in previous years, we monitor the movement in valuations and will update the accounts if necessary, when all those valuations have been received. We will of course ma- report any changes back to the committee later in the year. Fund officers are currently working on the preparation of the pension fund annual report, and this will be presented to committee at the meeting in October. The deadline for publishing this is the 1st of December, and we don't anticipate any issues in achieving this deadline. I'm very happy to take any questions on this element of the report, all the financial statements, before handing over to the external auditor.
Any questions? Councillor Hill?
Yes, looking at appendix A, management expenses have risen substantially. Do you have an explanation for that, please? And an explanation on the profit and loss on disposal of investments and changes in the value, there's a, there's a big change there. How much of that is to the valuation change? Or is there, has there been some losses or profits on disposals? If I could announce, somebody could answer me, but we've got a lady from York.
Yeah, no, that, that'll be me. So in, in terms of the investment management costs, they are the actual costs that we have incurred. They will move, an awful lot of manager fees are charged on the size of our asset base. So as our asset base increases, the value of those costs will increase. So you can see over the, the year, we've gone up in value by £150 million. So those costs are largely in line with that. We haven't agreed any increased fees, so it will purely be a movement on the value of the asset base. In terms of the profit and loss on disposal of investments and changes in investment values, that isn't, it, there are two elements to that. So some of that is, is a recognised gain or loss. When we actually physically sell something, there will be a profit or loss attached to that. The vast majority of that relates to un, unrecognized gains and losses, and the majority of that is the increase in value of the assets that we're holding. And you will see every year, the vast majority of that will be asset movements in value, rather than actually selling assets at that point in time.
Councillor Brockway?
Thank you, chairman. My question is further on in appendix A as well. It may be appropriate at this point, but you can always tell me if it's not. There are two things. One is just clarification, please. On page 101, I'll just read you a short sentence. Fifty-two percent of employers are paying monetary amounts to cover their funding deficit. Is that fifty-two percent of all employers or fifty-two percent of the employers who have deficits? So that's my first question.
So that is fifty, I can't remember the nubbi said apologies, fifty-two percent of all of our employers. So any employer who has a deficit calculated will need to be paying that secondary contribution rate to the fund. And from the 2022 valuation, that was just over half of our employers who were in that position.
Thank you very much. And my second question, just further up in the diagram, further up, it was, it's talking about the number of deferred pensioners at the county council, 16,492. Is there any impact? I mean, do you have any way of finding out when deferred pensioners are going to take their pension? Because if everybody decides to do it in one single year, what is the impact on the fund?
Yeah, so those members have the right to take their pension under the current regulations from 55, and they don't have to take that up to 75. So that is their choice at that period in time. Mel's looking at me, but I assume in the valuation, there is, and there is an estimate made in terms of who will take their pensions and when they will take them, because obviously it has an impact on the value of the pension that they get to take. But we don't, we can't control that. It is their right to take that when they want to take it. We, but we have, we manage our cash flow and we can manage our cash flow, and we have options if many more people were to take their pensions, to release cash from investment, should we need it at that period of time. But we do plenty of monitoring and plenty of work to make sure that we always have cash available to pay benefits when they're required.
Oh, thank you. Just one supplementary quickly, if I may, chairman. Do we have any data as to whether those people, so it's Lincolnshire County Council deferred pensioners, do we have any data about whether they're actually still working for Lincolnshire County Council or elsewhere? Because that's actually a little bit of extra data beyond pensions, giving us a picture of people wanting to stay and work for the council. So it's not a pension question, but...
If, if they're deferred members, then they won't be working for the county council. They've worked for them previously, but they aren't anymore.
Councillor Key?
Yeah, the, the ta- the table splits it between county council and between other employers. So yeah, they are both noted, noted in there.
Any further questions?
In which case, if I can hand over to our external auditor, who will take the committee through the draft audit plan, which is attached to appendix B, and then provide the committee with an update on the audit work that they've undertaken to date. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chair, and thank you, Claire. Just a bit of background, KPMG were the appointed auditors for Lincolnshire County Council, and therefore the pension fund as well. I'm Rashval Khan-Guram, the audit director responsible for the audit. What we have on page 145 of the pack is our audit plan and strategy for the 2425 financial statements that Claire has just presented to. The purpose of this document is to communicate to you, as those charged with governance, the key areas that we're required to communicate to you under auditing standards, ethical standards, and legislation, namely the Local Audit and Accountability Act. What we do when we start an audit is we don't start with an audit plan, we have to understand the pension fund, we have to understand the transactions within the pension fund, we have to understand the systems and processes, and we have to understand what's happening within the organisation, the risks that you're managing. Once we've done that, we're able to take some of the key decisions we're required to make in formulating our audit plan and strategy to deliver the audit. So one of those, we identify on page 147 of the document, and that, 147 of the pack, so it's page three of the document, and that's my materiality. So you'll see our materiality is at 1% of the fund, that is very typical. You know, we get a range within auditing standards, and that sits quite comfortably in the middle of that range, which is what you'd expect, given it's a public sector pension fund. Then we don't just look for errors and issues at that level, we design our procedures, consider an aggregation of risks, an ag- an aggregation of errors and issues. So we will be looking at a lower level, and we actually report to you any issues that we identify at £1.7 million. Now, clearly if there's issues that we think for a qualitative reason, that you need to be aware of, we will also identify those in our year-end report. As well as the decisions around materiality, we start thinking about risks. What are the risks in terms of we need to consider as part of the, this audit? So the financial statements you presented earlier, if there's a balancing there that's immaterial, there's no risk of that being, there's, there's a highly remote chance of that being materially stated, so that's not going to be a significant risk. We're looking at what are the key risks? And my colleague Mohammed is going to briefly take you through each of those risks and just provide you an update, because this report was published back in April. Since then, we started the audit, and we're doing some of that work on the financial statements that Claire's mentioned. So I'll pass you on to Mohammed, who'll take you through those risks briefly, and then I'll return and cover some of the other important communications.
Thanks, Rash. Good afternoon, members. The page 150 of the agenda summarizes our risk of management override of control. You will note that the con- that consistent to prior year, this is the only significant risk for the audit. This remains a significant risk as per the requirements of auditing standards. This is because the management is in a unique position to perpetuate fraud, because of their ability to manipulate accounting records and prepare fraudulent financial statements by overriding controls that otherwise appear to be effective. In response to the risk, we have performed a number of procedures. The major ones are: perform walkthrough of financial reporting process to obtain an understanding of the financial reporting process; evaluate the selection and application of the accounting policies; perform journals testing by first evaluating the completeness of the population, then screening them, and then eventually testing them by using high-risk criteria. As of today, we have been able to screen the journals and are in the process of testing high-risk journals. We have noted a controlled deficiency in the financial reporting process related to approval of journals, which is consistent with prior year. On page 151, we have risk of valuation of level one, level two and level three investments. We have assessed this as a higher assessed risk, which is consistent with prior year. This is because of the estimation uncertainty resulting from unobservable inputs to, of these investments, as well as the amount of balances on the financial statements. In response to the risk, we will be engaging our valuation specialist team for testing of the level one and level two investments, and for level three investments, we will be obtaining unordered NAV statements at closest to the measurement date and vouch devaluation to this. To assess the reliability of the NAV statements, we will be obtaining audited FS and comparing the NAV statement as a target. We have been able to test most of the investments till date and have not noted any material dis- differences in our testing. We are currently in the process of testing the level three investments and are awaiting NAV statements from some of the fund managers. On page 152, we have risk of investments that are not complete, do not exist, or are not accurately recorded. We are of the view that there is no change in audit risk considered for testing completeness, existing and accuracy of the fund's investments. This is because the tran- the process for recording and processing of transactions pertaining to investments remains consistent with prior year. In response to the risk, we will perform the following procedures: gain an understanding of the process over completeness, existence, accuracy of level one, two and three investments; obtain direct confirmations from custodian and fund managers; vouch purchases and sales to investment managers; and recalculate change in market value. As of now, we are in the process of our testing. We have received the confirmation from fund managers and are in the process of vouching sales and purchases and recalculations. On page 153, we have risk that actuarial position is not appropriately presented in the financial statements. The value of the actuarial liability is an estimate involving the selection of appropriate actuarial assumptions, most notably the discount rate applied by the pension fund, liabilities, inflation rates and mortality rates. Therefore, there is a risk that these are not appropriately disclosed in the financial statements, as these are not recognised in the financial statements, rather disclosed in the notes to the financial statements. In response to the risk, we will continue to involve our actuarial specialist to review fund's actuarial position, key assumptions selected by actuarial specialist of the fund, and special events that have occurred during the period. Our actuaries have completed their testing and have noted the liabilities to be within our acceptable range. I will now pass on to Rash, who will present the remainder of the plan. Thank you.
Thank you. So the remainder of the plan, I just want to cover some of the key other communications. So over on page 159 is the team members. At the time of reporting this, so back in April, that was the team. Myself and Mohammed are still a part of the team. Mool has now moved on, so we've got a new engagement manager, Paul Bradley, who's an experienced colleague working on pension audits. So he, he will no doubt be introduced to you at a later pension committer. In terms of our fees, our fees are set out for public sector audit appointments. They're, they're on page 160 of the document. As a body, as an organisation, you're consulted on by public sector audit appointments once a year on the level of those fees. In the past year, in the past year, we have had to charge fees over and above the base fees, as agreed with officers and PSA, for issues such as a new accounting standard, new auditing standard, ISO 315. That's now in the baseline, so you won't have a charge for that this year. Last year, you also had a new general ledger, so we need to do some extra work around that. That, again, you will not have a, an additional charge for this year. And then at points in the year, other auditors, because the admitted bodies to the pension scheme may need some assurance as well, they will write to us as auditors. We had a number of those letters last year. The, the, the cost of doing that works 26K. I can't give you an estimate of that at the moment, I've not had any letters yet. But then again, that's not unusual for the, this time of year in terms of receipt of those letters, but I will advise officers and committee as and when I will receive those. Finally, timeline, they're on pa- well, not finally, actually, page 161 timeline, we're exactly where we want to be in terms of this, our financial statements audit. At the October meeting, I believe the October meeting, we'll be producing our year-end report that highlights the outcome of our work. And then shortly after that, when we conclude the council's audit, because we need to issue the opinion on the pension fund and the council at the same time, we'll, we'll issue the final opinion. And on, and finally, on page 162, we just confirm our independence. We're required under ethical standards to be independent. It's not something we just consider at the beginning of the audit, end of the audit. Throughout the year, we have systems and processes within the firm to ensure we remain independent, such as we're not doing advisory work or other such work that we're not allowed to, and that's prohibited. And our other work, if we, if there's any other work, does not exceed a specific threshold. I've got no such... I've got no such issues to declare in terms of fee, fee concerns, in terms of, we also consider personal relationships. So for instance, I couldn't be a member of the Pension Fund and do this particular job. Confirmation, I'm not a member of the Pension Fund and neither can anybody on the team be that, because clearly that would be, that'd be unethical and so on. So we, we also consider personal relationships as that, as well as personal relationships with offices and so on, and there's nothing to declare. So that is our external audit plan. More than happy to take any questions through you, Chair.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Counselor Hill?
Yeah, so I mean, when you, obviously you are corporate for the county council auditors as well, but you're, you're not involved with that?
I am the lead for the county council audit as well.
Right, so obviously you report to the audit committee.
Yes.
So is there something different you need to, I'm just trying to coordinate what the audit committee do and what, do we just take their assurance that everything's okay? So I really don't want to waste people's time coming to different meetings when you've already discussed it. I know there's quite an extensive discussion of audits. So I just wonder, you'll still keep coming to the pensions? Is it necessary? How is the, suppose the question?
There's possibly one more for officers than me in terms of that, but I'm hoping, I'm happy to be directed by the needs of the committee.
And then moving forward, we now know that there'd just be one big lump of the Border to Coast Pension Fund. So moving forward, what's, obviously that will need auditors, assuming there's different auditors doing that. So moving forward, although our Lincolnshire Pension Fund is a distinct, discreet identity, in reality, it's going to be managed on block with everybody else. So what is the need for auditors for, for our block? And I just, is it more light touch? I'm just thinking, you know, you do a really good job, but I just think it's only worth doing if it's worth doing.
Claire, could you take that for me?
Yeah, no, I'm happy to pick that up. So the reporting is brought to the pensions committee and to the pensions board because of the committee's oversight responsibilities for the management of the fund. And one of the things that we're hoping is going to come through regulation in the not too distant future is that separation between the county council and the Pension Fund accounts. So the Pension Fund accounts will only be coming through the pensions committee, rather than going with the county council's accounts to the audit committee. So it's appropriate for that responsibility to be with this committee. In terms of the audit work, all of our managers have independent audit work done in the form of control reports, which are reviewed by officers to make sure that we're happy with the controls that they're operating. And that is the case for Border to Coast. KPMG will review those as well as part of their work. The continuation of an audit, we have a statutory responsibility to prepare accounts, although the assets are one element of what's in there. You've also got all of the in-year INE type items, so income and expenditure, all of those benefits that are being paid, all of those contributions that are being collected. And KPMG's work also looks at those payments that we're making and the income that we're receiving to make sure that they're presented fairly within our accounts. So the requirements will continue. I think the work may get a little easier for KPMG, because rather than contacting the number of managers that we have at the moment, all of that contact will go through Border to Coast. So it may be easier, but the requirement will still sit there.
KPMG?
Thank you. I think part of what I was going to say on the audit side, Claire said there, but absolutely we're appointed to be the auditors and you, a requirement under the accounts and audit regs to comply with SIP code and producing a set of accounts which includes a fund account. So we do need to audit those fund accounts. Exactly like Claire said, the nature of our work will change. The work on benefits payable, contributions receivables will remain the same, but how we get the assurance over investment values, asset values, that does change depending on the nature of your assets, where you hold those assets. And I know, you know, that's something we continually look at. You know, if you had a bigger proportion of level three investments, you know, our work would increase because there's more risk attached to level three investments and we'd be doing more work on those. So that's something we do consider every single year, the nature of the work on that investment balance. So at the moment, yes, you know, if the regulations stayed the same and you just had investments differently, that would change the nature of our work, but not the requirement. You need other changes in legislation and regulations for that to happen.
Yeah, so presumably then there's ten, there's going to be ten in Border to Coast, lots of auditors looking at each individual one. I mean, I think there will be a need, but I just wonder in part of the legislation, it does, this is nonsense. And I do get concerned when I look at the cost of, it's to a pension, the pensioners are paying for all of this, aren't they? And when you look at all the advisors and all the, lots of other people, all being paid, you know, serious money, because, you know, you're, you're very highly qualified people. You just wonder in terms of just how, I, I just think to myself, just how much money is this all costing every year to the Pension Fund? Which means either pensioners will get less money or the, more likely the employers will be asked to stump up. I think the whole thing is frankly getting out of control. And because there've been some scandals, what people do is they just add on more and more legislation to, you know, assure everybody they're doing something and nobody seems to say, stop. And I'm afraid the government doesn't seem to then say, look, let's look how we can do this just as effectively, but more, with more value for money. And I, I do think it's, it is getting out, growing like topsy, but perhaps that's just me.
Counsel Brockway?
Just picking up on that, talking about costs to the pensioners. I'm sure I read in the papers, but I can't remember where, that the overall cost to the Pension Fund of all the administration is in, just in excess of fifty-one million. There is a figure in there about large costs to the Pension Fund, but I wasn't expecting to ask anything on that, so don't ask me where it is, but it's in there.
Yeah, so if you look in the accounts document, note ten sets out the management expenses and that's all the costs that are incurred for the Pension Fund. And for twenty-four, twenty-five, that was fourteen point two million pounds.
What was this, any idea what this fifty-one million figure is? Or I know I didn't dream it, but, so fourteen point two. Okay, thank you. I'll go back and find that figure. Thank you.
Any additional questions from anyone?
Thank you. We'll take this to the note. Recommendation, committee approved draft Pension Fund account and note the external audit is called, so audit is updated. Can I have it closer?
Counselor Williams, seconda. Counselor Bunny. All in favour? Any against?
Any objections? We'll move on to item nine, the annual training plan and policy.
Claire, again?
Thank you. So this is the annual review of the committee's training plan and policy, and the recommendations are that the committee approve the training policy, discuss and agree the proposed areas for future training and approve the annual training plan. The training policy is attached to appendix A on page one hundred and seventy-three, and this sets out the training and development requirements for both members of the committee and officers of the council responsible for management of the fund. Paragraph thirteen sets out the mandatory minimum training requirements that, and these include the induction training, which happily all of the committee have already undertaken before their first meeting. And then that all members of the committee complete the Hyman's Robertson LGPS online learning academy within their first twelve months of being on the committee. And you should all have received log-on details for the site, but if you don't think they've come through to you, please let me or my colleague Josh know and we will make sure you get those. The table on page one hundred and seventy-one sets out progress towards those mandatory training, the mandatory training requirements for the committee. An element of each committee meeting is also dedicated to training. And the training policy on pages one hundred and seventy-eight to one hundred and eighty set out the future training plans and currently include some training around the triennial valuation, which Melanie and Kelly will give later today. Investment beliefs and strategic asset allocation, cybersecurity, and then there's also time in meeting agendas for, for the committee to build in future training requirements if there is anything that you would like to be picked up. The policy also includes a training day and visit to Border to Coast offices in Leeds so that you can meet some of the key people at the company and understand more about their operations. And we're currently working with Border to Coast and Democratic Services to get a date in the diary for this. It will be in November and is most likely to be on Friday, the twenty-eighth. Once it is confirmed, appointments will come out to all committee members from Democratic Services for attendance on that day. As is set out in the recommendations, the committee are asked to identify any future training needs that they would like to be added into the plan. And this is an item which is discussed at every committee meeting. So today, we've got some training planned in for the next few meetings, which are in the diary, and we can look at future meetings at further training. And I'm very happy to take any questions on the report.
Are there any questions? Counselor Hill?
Just, I mean, I've, I think I have completed the second part of the Hyman's, although it says to be, I think I've completed it, haven't I? They said I'd completed it, but...
The...
Have I completed, question, have I actually done it?
We get, we get, the, the Hyman's online, there are eight modules that you need to complete. Fabulous. We get a monthly report from Hyman's, which sets out who's done what.
It's not there at the moment, but yeah.
That, that may not have been picked up in the report that we got last time. So, but when that is, that will obviously be reflected through.
So coming back to, you know, individual training, when I think the idea of us doing the training when we're here anyway, and you're all here, is a very good idea. So that will count as individual training, won't it? So I think the only other question, is there any, anything else I need to be, we need to get trained upon, shall we say, as part from, will it just all be done for during a regular meeting, so?
Yep, so the induction training, the Hyman's online training absolutely need to be completed. There will then be training in every committee meeting that you come to. We've got some items in already for the next few meetings. Officers and the committee can contribute to those, but we will make sure that you are doing all the training that you need to do. The weekly email that comes out to all members of the committee and board also has opportunities for any conferences or external training that you might want to attend. And any member of the committee is very, very welcome to attend anything which is advertised to you in that weekly update.
Yeah, for example, there is a fraud training module. I was thinking, I said, do I really want to do this or will it be covered anyway? Well, I'm saying every week we get this stuff and I do want to be assured I can say, well, I wouldn't need to go to the, look at the fraud one because it will be covered.
Yeah, if, if you can look at those, so anything Lola has in it, current issues, and they release new videos. So I think the one you talked about is the pension scams.
Yeah, scams, that's it.
That's been released very recently. If the committee can review those videos as well, I think they're quite short in addition. So as things come out, but we will put those into the weekly email that comes up to you to highlight if there's anything new coming into the Hyman's training tool. And we would ask that all members of the committee complete those as well, please.
Good. I did try to get on it and failed, so I gave up, so I'll try again. In terms of if somebody misses a committee, for example, I can't come to the next one because I've got a pre-booked holiday, will then, obviously we can come to you to get the package so we can do it online?
Well, if, it, it depends what the training is. If you're not at the meeting, that you'll obviously receive the paper packs anyway and then all of the meetings are...
No, it's the training I was talking about.
Yes.
So I can't remember what training's being done in September.
In September, we're going to have a little, an introduction to investment beliefs and strategic asset allocations. There will be slides in the pink section of the paper. And if you have any specific questions, then we'll be very happy to pick those up from that.
Can I encourage everybody to go on to Lola and complete the course as quickly as possible? Even the co-opted people who have done it before. I know there's a recommendation that you do it every two years. I'm still in the process of completing mine. Thank you. Are there any further questions? In that case, take a vote, approve the training policy and the annual training plan? Thank you. We'll go on to item ten, the pension regulator general code.
Thank you, Chairman. Just in the interest of time to ensure we give our actuaries enough time to go through the triennial valuation assumptions, I shall be very brief. TPR general code came in last year. We use a compliance checker that Aon have provided to look at our compliance. Last year, we looked at the LGPS essential items only. That was the first time that it came out. And section two just updates where we are on there. This time round, this is the, our first annual review, we've looked at both the LGPS essentials and also best practice. And there are two main essential items which we will need to complete. One is to prepare an updated scheme of delegation covering all areas, so that's investments, administration, governance, et cetera. We will wait until the changes come out from the Pension Schemes Bill so that we're only bringing it to you the once, rather than doing it now and then having to update it shortly. And the second thing, which was from last year as well, we had some cyber training last year, but we need to create a cybersecurity policy. So we will do that over the coming twelve months, taking on board what LCC do and what our administrators do, because we don't actually manage any of the data ourselves. And there is one action that sits with West Yorkshire Pension Fund in getting assurance from their third-party suppliers, which they are aiming to have done by the thirty-first of August. So we'll bring this back annually. Appendix A shows how we stand against the TPR code, but I'll happily take any questions. Thank you.
Okay, I propose we accept the report. Thank you. I now move to item eleven, consideration of exemption information. I move that under section one hundred A of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two, the press and public be excluded from the meeting for the following agenda item on the grounds that it is considered to contain exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of the Schedule twelve A of the Local Governments Act as amended. Can I have a notification of all in agreement? Thank you. Thank you, George.